So, let's call the order, the June 26th Planning Commission meeting. Can we have a roll call, Charlie?
Commissioner Cardoza.
Here.
Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Hoff.
Here.
And Chair Martin.
Here.
We have a quorum of four commissioners. Commissioner Jeffrey and Vice Chair Donaldson have excused absences this evening, and we are expecting Commissioner Beranko shortly.
Great. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item on the agenda is the public comment period. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the commission on items not on the agenda? This is your opportunity to address concerns or issues, points that you want to make to the Planning Commission. And we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. And then, when you're finished, ask that you sign in off to the right there for the record.
Okay. My name is Brian Donnie. I live at 4333 Holden Street. Here tonight to talk about trees, and specifically in the Age Song Project. Now, several months ago, I was walking my dog late at night, and I saw signs attached to the trees on 40th Street on the south side between Horton and Holden, several of them. And it said, "These trees are slated for being removed, and if you have a problem with this, to notify the Public Works Director as the UFO dictates urban forestry ordinance." So, I did that, and we had, there was a hearing, a public hearing, and it was attended by myself, Maurice Kaufman, the Public Works Director, and Michael Geena, the Assistant City Attorney at City Hall. So, at this meeting, I explained why I believe the trees should not be moved from their present location. And I cited the designer of 40th Street, who back in 1993 gave a presentation to the people of Emeryville. And this, and he said that there's an important function of these trees, and that is that they are in an alignment, they're in a straight alignment. And then, that leads to harmony, streetscape harmony, and that if you were to have these out, trees out of alignment, it would be disorderly, and it would be like have a pastiche kind of piecemeal effect that would sort of cheapen the public realm. So, we have them in alignment now. So, that's the reason I gave as to why these trees should not be cut down, moved, and placed out of alignment. Now, I have no problem with cutting the trees down as long as the UFO has obeyed. The problem I have is that I went to the meeting, I explained that about this notion of alignment. And it's not just my opinion, it's the, it's city planning experts' opinion, that alignment is necessary for the harmony of the streetscape. So, I waited for two, about a week and a half. A letter came from, in the mail from Planning to work, Public Works Director, as is required, and he did not address my concern. Instead, he talked about other reasons why the trees are going to be cut down, about their roots are going to be damaged, what have you. So, the point is this, is that the UFO, Urban Forestry Ordinance, has not been obeyed by the city of Emeryville. Because I say implicit in this concept of the meeting is that I'm supposed to say a reason why the tree shouldn't be killed or cut down and moved, and the city is supposed to respond to that reason. Instead of just, I talk, I say some words, they respond with a letter that has no connection. That's not the function here. So, so the, at least the spirit of the UFO has not been followed, it's been, the spirit of the law has been broken, if not the letter. I say even the letter of the law, because implicit, as I said, implicit in this idea of this meeting, is that when I talk about apples, the letter should talk about apples, not oranges. So, this isn't, there's an ongoing pattern in our practice, if I can finish my thought, about trees not being valued in this town. And I think it's time to start valuing trees, and I wish you would do more than the absolute legal minimum to protect our trees.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else wishing to speak to the commission under public comment? I wanted to ask, is it appropriate, Michael, to respond to the points and ask some questions about the Age Song application and the appeal at this point? It's not on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda. Perhaps you could save your comments for the commissioner comments?
Next item on the agenda is the action recap for the meeting of May 22nd, and I was actually absent from that meeting, so I have to abstain. Is there any comment?
I would move approval.
Okay. One second. So, without a, do we need one more commissioner to approve the meeting minutes? Or should we continue the approval?
He's here, he's just...
We don't have Angela. Seems like it would be appropriate to continue this to the next meeting.
Yes, you would have to, you would have to continue this.
So, we will continue approval of the May 22nd, 2008 minutes till the next meeting, where hopefully we'll have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is Director's Report. Charlie?
First, with regard to the city council's actions since your last meeting, they have met twice, on June 3rd and on June 17th. On June 3rd, the council had a study session on the Emery Station Triangle Project, which is a proposed lab building at Powell and Hollis Streets. Planning Commission study session on this project is tentatively scheduled for your next meeting on July 24th. I would also note that there is a community meeting on this project tonight, which obviously neither staff nor the commission members are going to be able to attend. The redevelopment agency approved a contract with a firm called Museum Management Consultants, Incorporated, to prepare a strategic plan for the Emeryville Arts and Cultural Center, which is the building behind us here. For Pixar, the city council and the redevelopment agency approved amendments to the owner participation agreement and the development agreement that were approved by the commission at your last meeting. The council had the second reading of the Affordable Housing Set Aside Ordinance Amendment that you approved in April. And finally, last but certainly not least, on the June 3rd agenda, the city council approved the operating budget for the city for the next two fiscal years. And as a part of that budget approval, they authorized upgrading of the planning technician position in the Planning and Building Department to Assistant Planner, and we are now in the process of recruiting for an Assistant Planner to fill that position. On June 17th, the council held a study session on the South Bayfront Pedestrian and Bicycle Bridge in advance of the public meeting that was held last Saturday, June 21st. And at that study session, they reviewed plans for Horton Landing Park and for the proposed grand staircase approach to the bridge on the west side at Bay Street. The redevelopment agency approved a contract with HQE to prepare a project initiation document, as it's called, for the proposed pedestrian bicycle bridge over the freeway. The redevelopment agency approved a contract with Placemaking Group to create a PowerPoint presentation which will illustrate the benefits of major development projects and the success of the redevelopment program in Emeryville. Concerning Pete's Coffee, you may recall that when you approved the remodeling of the Pete's Coffee Building, one of the conditions of approval was a pedestrian path, a mid-block pedestrian path between Holden and Horton Streets. On June 17th, the city council amended the capital improvement program to add that path, called the Horton to Horton Street Pedestrian Path, and they accepted $100,000 from Pete's and appropriated it to that project. And finally, on June 17th, the council approved the Transportation Committee's recommendation to restripe the 40th Street Bridge to reduce the number of lanes from four to two, which will create a four-foot divide, four-foot lane divider above, between the opposing lanes of traffic, and also a buffer zone between the vehicle lanes and the bicycle lanes. And the intent of this is to reduce motor vehicle speeds and improve safety for cyclists. I wanted to let you know about an upcoming community meeting for the Center of Community Life. You may have heard that that was scheduled for Wednesday, July 23rd. That is actually no longer the case. There will be a meeting on Wednesday, July 23rd. However, it's a meeting of the, I believe they're now called the Partners for Community Life, which used to be called ESAC, the Emeryville Youth Services Advisory Committee, now been renamed the Partners for Community Life. So, they will be holding a meeting on Wednesday, July 23rd, at 5:30 PM at the senior center. And of course, the public is, as well as commissioners, are welcome to attend that meeting. The community meeting is now going to be held sometime in September. Finally, with regard to commission appointments, several of the relevant people aren't here, but I'll go ahead and say this anyway. As you know, Commissioner Beranko has resigned from the commission effective this month because she has bought a house in Oakland and will no longer be an Emeryville resident. The vacancy for that position was announced by the city clerk on June 20th, last Friday, and applications are due on Wednesday, July 9th, by 10:00 AM to the city clerk's office. So, any resident of Emeryville who's interested in serving on the Planning Commission is welcome to fill out an application and submit it to the city clerk for the city council's consideration. The application forms are available from the city clerk's office. They can also be downloaded from the city's website. In addition, two commissioners' three-year term, regular three-year terms are due to expire at the end of this month. That's Commissioner Cardoza and Vice Chair Donaldson. Both of them have requested reappointment from the city council. We expect the city council to make all three of these appointments at their July 15th meeting, which will be in time for your next meeting on July 24th. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Charlie, I wasn't able to attend the workshop for the pedestrian bridge from Bay Street to the Novartis Garage. Were you able to attend?
Yes, I was there.
I'm just curious how well-attended it was, and was it productive?
It was good. It wasn't quite as well-attended as some previous meetings. I'd say there were maybe 15 or 20 members of the community there, as well as Council Member Cassus Bukowski and Davis were there.
Was the focus on the park design?
Yes. Yes, it wasn't really about the bridge. I mean, the bridge was mentioned, but since the council has already determined the design of the bridge, really, the only aspects of the bridge itself that were subject of discussion were the ramps on the east side and the staircase on the west side.
Okay.
Other than that, it was mainly about the park.
Okay. And was there a discussion, next step, whether this is going to, if and when it will come to the commission?
I believe there is an intention to bring it back to the Planning Commission for a final look-see after it's, you know, more fleshed out.
Refined, okay. Thanks, Charlie. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have two public hearing items, and what we'll do is hear from staff, and then we'll hear from the applicant if they'd like to make a presentation. And then, we will open the public hearing, and we ask anyone to comment to the, on the project, to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, and ask that you sign in off to the right here. And Maru.
Let me have the overhead, please.
Can we have the overhead? The first item on the agenda is the Oasis Pampers Bar signage. And Maru, I guess this is your project, I see on the computer there.
Good evening, Chair Martin, members of the commission. This is a proposal for signage for an existing business on San Pablo Avenue, as indicated on the overhead slide here. It's basically the northern end of the Greve Stock Building. What they are proposing are three main things. There is going to be a projecting sign, which is going to be right. There you go. This is the projecting sign, and there will be awnings on the main entry, which is here, and then storefront awnings with signage on it. This is the projecting sign, it's going to be double-sided, it's about three and a half by two feet. It's going to be mounted about 10 feet above the ground, and it's going to be either frosted plaques or powder-coated metal box. This is the front, this is mainly the entrance awning. You can see the signage, it's about 56 square feet, the size of the awning. The big letters are 14 inches, the smaller ones are about half that size. And these are the storefront awnings. The middle one is a little bit bigger, 140 square feet, and it's surrounded by two awnings which are a little bit smaller. That's about the extent of the proposal. Findings that need to be made is that the signage is readable, compatible with what's in the vicinity, and integrated with the architecture of the building. And staff believes that these findings can be made, and recommends approval for the awnings and signage. So, if there is any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Is this partially funded through the facade grant program, or is this completely applicant-initiated?
They are receiving some facade grants from economic development.
Okay.
Does this meet all of the standards of the city for signage?
Yes.
This sign's not illuminated, or just has a spotlight on it? The projecting sign?
Right.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation? Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to make a presentation to the, introduce yourself and say hi to the commission?
Hello, my name is Lynn Reed.
Come on up to the microphone, so everybody on television at home can hear you.
Sorry, I didn't dress appropriately.
You didn't prepare.
Okay. Well, my name is Lynn Reed, and I'm the owner of Oasis Pampers Bar, and I've been in the space for six years, because I used to have a former business, but it didn't do good. But I've been there six years, and I wanted to take advantage of the facade grant and stay, because I really like Emeryville.
Great. Thanks. So, any questions to staff?
Sign in to the...
Yeah, can we have you sign in for the record off to the right there? Any questions to staff? With that, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have any discussion?
I move to approve.
I'll second that. Okay. So, there's a motion and a second? Roll call?
On the motion, Commissioner Cardoza.
Aye.
Commissioner Flores.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoff.
Aye.
Chair Martin.
Aye.
Four ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
It's great to see you doing well there.
Yes, good luck.
And we're happy, happier that you're there. Next item on the agenda is the 39th and Adeline Mixed Use Project.
I must recuse myself, my company is the owner developer.
So, we have three commissioners here, we don't have a quorum. I think what we're going to do, we're not required to have a public hearing on a draft EIR, that's our typical procedure. So, what we will do is take comment tonight, and then, Michael, do you want to make a suggestion on how we're going to handle this with three commissioners?
Yeah, sure. So, because there is a lack of a quorum for this item, the, the only action that the commission can take would be to continue the item. However, Charlie could advise us about how the public could submit comments before the, before the deadline.
So, the suggestion is to continue the public comment period, but not hold another public hearing?
Well, kind of the opposite.
Okay, go ahead.
No, actually, not the opposite. Well, city attorney advises that under the Brown Act, you can't even really hold a public hearing and take comments if you don't have a quorum. So, the only thing you can really do in the absence of a quorum is to continue the item. However, the public comment period on this draft EIR that's been advertised ends on July 7th, and your next meeting isn't until July 24th. So, that would be after the end of the public comment period. So, what we would suggest, anyone who's here who wishes to comment on this should put their comments in writing, and they can submit them to Miru Desai here, Senior Planner at 1333 Park Avenue, Emeryville, by July 17th, and they will be responded to in the final EIR.
So, the suggestion is that people not make oral comments tonight?
Well, because the commission is unable to hold a public hearing without a quorum.
Well, how about if we take verbal comment and not open, officially open the public hearing?
The, the Brown Act provides that the only, that the only action that you, that the body can take when there is no quorum is to continue the meeting. So, it would be inappropriate to, to take any action, including receiving any, any, any public comment. And as a result, the, there is a way that the public can submit comments before, which is in a written form, as Charlie advised.
Right.
Perhaps you could reopen the public comments section of the meeting, since this has now been dropped off the agenda, people would now be allowed to talk about this subject.
It, it still would be of no value, because we don't have a quorum for the subject.
But then, at least you could assuage anybody's, members of the public who want to talk about this, desire to talk about it tonight.
The written comments would be...
No, that's not the point. The point is, the public comment period is an opportunity for people to comment on items that aren't on the agenda.
And this is not on the agenda now.
No, it's still on the agenda, it's just that we can't address it through the public hearing. So...
Is there any virtue in holding a special meeting before our next meeting?
And returning?
Before we do that, let me just ask, is there anyone here in the audience who was intending to make verbal comments on this tonight? There are.
Two.
Would you be amenable to submitting your comments in writing by July 17th?
17th.
17th, 17th.
Yeah, I guess, you know, a lot of times, people can put things more articulately in writing. My concern is that I want to see any issues that are raised by people who are here tonight in particular, but anyone else who wants to comment before the end of the review period. I want to make sure that their voice is heard. So, I don't know what this does in terms of our typical procedure, and, and how anxious the applicant is to move forward, and whether it's better to actually, and return when we can have a quorum and hold a public hearing that we have as practice done before.
Couldn't, at the next meeting, in the general public comment period, number two on the agenda, couldn't they make their comments at that time, or would that be illegal?
Well, the public review period will have closed at that point. It closes on July 7th.
It closes on the 7th.
So, that doesn't help us.
Why not have a special meeting of the commission?
Next week?
Next week, yeah. Well, I mean, we're not having a meeting tonight, we could have a meeting a week from now.
Well, I'm just not sure we're going to be able to pull a quorum.
Okay.
Because Patty is still stuck in this situation she's in, Gail's on the east coast at least till Monday, Frank has to recuse, and Angela's gone.
We have a suggestion, which is to continue this item to the next, oh, that would mean that the public, well, yeah. We would suggest that we extend the public comment period until July 24th, and that you continue this item to the July 24th meeting.
We do that?
We don't think that will delay the preparation of the final EIR.
Are we allowed to extend the public comment period?
I think you can.
What does that do to the city of Oakland as a joint agency?
We'd have to get their concurrence.
Before we can do it. But you're confident that they'll agree to that?
I don't see why they wouldn't.
And is that less convenient to those that were interested in making comment tonight? That means you have to come back to another meeting. Would you prefer to just put your comments in writing?
Either that, or the, or the public can continue to submit their item, or their comments in writing.
Right.
As well.
Well, I guess I, I'd like to know whether you want to come and spend another, come down here another night in deference to you, or you're happy and would prefer to just submit your comments in writing.
I would like your developers' proposal.
Is that appropriate to hear?
No, the only, the only, what's, what's appropriate for the commission to do is either continue this item, well, to continue this item to another meeting, whether it's a special meeting or your next regular meeting. That's the only appropriate action.
Or to announce that we're not going to continue, and you have till the 7th to submit your comments.
In response to this comment from the audience, I'd just like to note that this is not a presentation of the developers' proposal tonight. There will be a brief description of the developers' proposal as part of the EIR consultant's presentation, just simply to indicate what the project is that's being analyzed. But the main point of this presentation is on the EIR, the impacts identified, the mitigation measures, and any comments people want to make on that.
Oh, so we are going to have a presentation from the, from LSA tonight?
Not now.
Oh.
We were in, we were, I'm sorry, maybe I misspoke.
No, I'm confused now.
That was the intention.
We're not approving the project.
If we had a quorum, if everything were proceeding as planned with a quorum, you would not be hearing a presentation tonight from the developer. You would be hearing a presentation from LSA.
Okay.
About the EIR, at which, during which they would briefly describe the project.
I now understand, Charlie. I got the impression you were telling us we were going to have a presentation from LSA tonight anyway, which is not going to be the case.
No, that was not what I was saying, sorry.
Okay. So, I'm going to defer back to the three individuals in the audience who requested input tonight. So, would you prefer that we continue this to another meeting, where you have to attend another meeting, and then comment in person? Or would you prefer to simply submit your comments in writing? Because if you prefer the latter, we won't continue this, and we won't have a public hearing on this item, and you don't have to come to another meeting.
That's why, there wouldn't be a presentation?
There will be when the, when this project comes before the commission as a public hearing on approval of the project. There will be a public hearing on that, and you will be allowed to comment during that meeting as well.
And we expect that to be October-ish.
Right. This, this hearing is specifically on the adequacy of the draft EIR, to make sure that everything the consultant laid out there has been presented in a thorough way. It's an informational document. So, I'm seeing, my impression is the majority of those that wanted to speak tonight would prefer to submit in writing.
So, then we can't hear what they're going to say regarding that the...
We're not going to hear from the applicant tonight, or from the LSA. We can't open the...
We would have, and then I would have responded.
Right. But we can't, because we don't have a quorum to do that.
Would you like a copy of the EIR?
Writing will be here, they'll have a presentation, and then respond.
Would you like a copy of the EIR?
Yes.
All the, all their presentation is going to do is to summarize the EIR.
Right. So, okay. So, we have decided we are not going to have a public hearing on the draft EIR at the next meeting. The public is allowed to comment on this project until the end of the comment period, which is July 7th. So, you need to get your comments in writing to Charlie before that deadline.
To Miru.
Are you saying we're not required to have a public hearing on the EIR?
We are not. Not on the draft EIR.
Oh, you're not?
It's a, it's a procedure that we undertake to try to make sure we get input from the public, but it's not required.
Not required, okay.
Okay. So, we have resolution on that issue. We're not going to hear from LSA tonight, and we're not going to hear from the applicant, and we will see, I guess, the applicant at the public hearing on the application then. I actually had a few comments on the EIR myself, so I will submit those in writing to Charlie.
And I would also note that Commissioner Donaldson, who is not here, also had some comments, and she has put those in writing, and you have those on the dais in front of you. And you've also got some comments from another gentleman, George.
How does the commission address these various written comments?
You don't address them. Our environmental consultant addresses them.
And so, that we will have what's called a...
Do we have to determine if what they say is substantial, significant mitigation? Who makes the decision whether the mitigation they propose is adequate?
You do.
And we do that, we do that through certification of the EIR. We either say the document is adequate...
Oh, so we will get to certify the EIR?
Right.
Yes, later. When it's, when it's...
Oh, but you won't have a public, okay.
When it's a final EIR. This is a draft EIR.
At the next meeting, we will have the EIR to decide...
Not at the next meeting.
Okay. At a meeting.
Yes, at a future meeting.
Probably at the same meeting where we're looking at project approval.
Right.
Which is in October.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Is Frank coming back?
Oh, Frank is out there talking.
He's left the building.
So...
There's Frank. Oh, we have a quorum again.
We concluded the public hearing items, and we have, the last item on the agenda is Commissioner Comments. And so, we, during public comment, we had concern expressed about street trees on 40th.
Excuse me, we still have a meeting going on. Could I ask people if they want to talk to leave the chamber, please?
Thanks, Charlie. We had come, during public comment, we had some concerns expressed about street trees along 40th, and I spoke with Charlie and Michael about that earlier today. I can't remember the whole history with Age Song and that application. I clearly remember there being a condition that the project has to comply with the tree preservation ordinance. And regardless of how that issue got resolved or didn't, and maybe, Michael, you want to provide some clarification on that, my concern is a, the need for consistent treatment of street trees along 40th. And we approved the Granite Expo Project, where we ended up saving the trees, and we didn't. It was proposed, staff... It was proposed, staff wanted it at the curb, and we required that the project keep the trees where they are, so that the trees didn't go out. So now we've got one applicant.
When we kept them where they are, did that keep them in alignment with the other trees?
No. Well, with the original, the existing trees, yeah.
And I thought we'd approved it the other way, and then we changed our mind and went back.
Right.
Design review, and then in the.
You need for Granite Expo?
For Granite Expo.
For Granite Expo, we left the trees.
Because for Granite Expo, we approved to move it, and then we proved to move it back.
Trees in alignment with the other trees.
Right.
Okay.
So now we have H-Song that appears to be moving forward, and the trees are going to be removed in their existing alignment and put up to the curb. And I don't, my concern is that we need a consistent policy for what's going, obviously, a project has to conform and comply with the tree preservation ordinance. But I also want to make sure that we've got a consistent policy with what's going on there. Are we going to move the trees out to the street? Or are we going to leave them where they are? You know, I don't want a haphazard policy there. So it would be useful to think, have staff think through what it means, you know, what the arguments are for making the adjustments. It's obviously too late for Granite Expo, and it appears to be too late for H-Song to do anything to make sure those two.
We moved them back.
Jim, Jim, there was a memo.
No, I'm saying about adjusting what we approved.
Jim, there was a memo I read, I'm sure it was from the city manager, which said that this tree alignment was considered at a planning commission at a public hearing, and the new alignment was approved. So it was something that the body considered and approved the change.
The realignment of all the trees?
No, the tree at this particular location.
H-Song, yes. No, I do, this was a couple of years ago, at least a year ago. And I don't, I knew, I know there was a discussion, I don't know if you were on the commission then.
No, I wasn't.
But it was brought up at the very last minute during the commission discussion, and sort of a surprise to me. And there were concerns that I expressed and others expressed about what was going to happen. My point is, with that approval, it brings the trees up to the curb. Subsequently, we approved Granite Expo, and we required them to keep the trees where they are.
They wanted it to stay where they were.
No, they wanted them out to the curb.
No, we made them move out to the curb, and then we made them move them back.
Chair, Chair Martin, may I make a suggestion? This item is not an agendized item.
Right.
And if you would like to have a further discussion on this, I'd suggest that perhaps we put this on the agenda.
I think that's a good idea.
For your next meeting.
That's good. And it would be great if staff could report back to us just what the status of those, because there seems to be a difference of opinion of what the history was.
What was the history on Granite Expo, too?
Go ahead, Charlie.
I have here the minutes and the conditions of approval for the H-Song project.
I know, but I got the sense from Michael that he wants to curtail this discussion until it's been agendized.
If, if.
Is that not correct, Michael?
I, yes, if you want to continue the discussion, and it sounds like there is a bit of discussion that the commission would like to entertain.
At that time, Charlie, could you also review the decision we made on Granite Expo?
Sure.
Both of them, because they both apply to this tree thing.
And you understand my larger point is that we need a consistent policy with what's happening out there, so that as we make decisions, we know what we're trying to achieve. Any other comments?
I did wonder if anybody stepped forward on the RFP for the fourplex at 40th and Adeline. Has anybody submitted a proposal?
Oh, for the, the old house that was being saved?
I'm not sure. I, I can find out and report back at the next meeting.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, with that, we'll close the planning commission meeting at 7:07, and I think that's a record. That's got to be some kind of record.